Good evening. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 24, 2020, to order. I'd like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the clerks who are seated in the front here. Once you've evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please note Town of Lincoln Committee and council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I would like to thank the public for attending the meeting this evening, and I just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement, to please be respectful while others are speaking, and to please refrain from clapping. Delegations will have five minutes to speak and are asked to stay focused on the agenda item. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Roll call. Council, several members of council send their regrets this evening. Counselor McPherson and Counselor Brunet are both unable to be with us. Staff are in attendance. Many of you, thank you for being here this evening. Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? There being none. Item number four is confirmation of the agenda. Do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? I have one clerical adjustment to make. Item 6.3 will be 6.2, and item 6.2 will be 6.3. Statutory public meetings, we have no statutory public meetings this evening. We'll move on to our planning and active development agenda. 6.1 delegations, we have no delegations this evening for planning and active agenda. Moving on, item 6.2, our consent agenda. We are now considering the consent agenda which includes heritage minutes from January 16, 2020. Would any member like to remove the item from the consent agenda to discuss? Moving on, there being no one, we will require a mover for the motion to pass item 6.2 on the consent agenda. Counselor Pachariva, thank you. All in favor? And those opposed? That is carried unanimously. 6.3 reports. We are now considering item 6.3, PD-06-20, annual building report, annual building permit activity. Are there any questions from council?
Okay, it's not going to come up.
Counselor Mikulak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to the building activity report, I just, I, I'm pretty impressed by these numbers. Another record year, 160, almost $169 million. And I'm also impressed with the number of apartments that are part of that. 280 units representing 48 percent. I think that there was a need or is still a need for this sort of housing within town, and I like to see the diverse amount of building that's going on. And I think we should toot our own horn every now and again, especially when we're a small town of 24,000, and to pump out 170, just about 170 million in construction, that's pretty impressive, especially when you hear other municipalities and what they are able to produce relative to their size. So, kudos to planning and the building department.
Thank you, Counselor Mikulak. Anybody else? Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to comment about the mix, because that is certainly, having diverse communities is very important. But I think there's a perception that we're building many less detached homes, which is not the case here in 2019. 126 were detached and 128 were multiples, so we seem to be holding our own, or at least we were at that time. And 280 apartments, again, I would reinforce that. That's very good for retention of people in our community and certainly indicates that we need them. I also would like to comment, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the number of hours per unit. So, I just want to make sure I have this correct, so, want to confirm this with the CAO. There were 799 permits issued, and it takes about 26 hours per unit, administrative examination of plans, plus the inspections. So, at 799 permits, that's 20,774 hours, which equates to 10.6 full-time equivalents. And I know we don't have full-time, we don't have 10.6 full-time equivalents in the building department. I think we actually have Mr. Greenaway, isn't that correct, Mr. CAO? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. We actually do have Mr. Greenaway, we have Ben, and we also have one of our planning technicians that assists in that fashion. So technically, we have three staff assisting in some fashion, but I think your number, Mayor Easton, is correct when you incorporate the various staff from the entire planning department, you incorporate public works, you incorporate all the human hours that go into all the work done on these numbers.
So, that's, that's very good. Thank you for that. And I guess the point that I want to make is that once, the part that council is involved in is the approval, but the work that goes on for months and months after these projects are approved is really substantial. And this is an area that we certainly, we haven't had any asks for staff, and we haven't approved any asks, except in the area of planning as it says, to specific major projects. So, Mr. Chairman, Lincoln's economy is very strong. These are record-breaking numbers, and it's a very positive story across Niagara, and lends itself to the position that we can take on being one of the most diverse economies in the region. It sends a strong message to our residents and those investing in Lincoln that our progress and momentum is deliberate. It's well thought out and it's planned for, it's tangible, and something that we should be proud of. With major investment and development happening across the town, I'm really pleased that we have dedicated staff in the building and construction sectors, because certainly when things are not going right, I hear about it from the associations. And so, again, this shows that we're working together, we're creating employment opportunities, and we're ensuring that our community moves forward. So, it is a lot of numbers, it looks pretty straightforward, but it has a major impact in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. CAO, you have a few comments?
I do, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick comments, and I think just to piggyback on the comments that Mayor Easton made. You know, my thanks to all the staff involved. This is a significant task. This is the second year in a row we are seeing record-setting construction values. I think when you look at the amount of work that's happening, the diverse type of development we're seeing, not only across town, but also from the various sectors. So, the importance of having a diverse economy, when you look at the industrial and commercial sectors, when you look at reversing that residential tax-based reliability, those are all important things that when we talk about affordability, when we talk about financial sustainability, are all key elements. So I did want to highlight those. This is the second year in a row, as I think a couple of us have said right now, and I think the part that's positive from my perspective is we're seeing all sectors represented. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the first report, if you would indulge me.
Sure. Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, my apologies for not speaking up when the Heritage Committee minutes were brought forward. Mr. Chairman, I do have a question of the CAO, as this report and also the response that came at the planning meeting regarding one development application. Sorry? No, I'm just asking a question. Thank you. So, I want to know what plans the, what plans the, if any, that the CAO might have. We spent a lot of time in the last term getting the heritage policies in very good shape. It was a huge amount of staff time, there was a lot of consultation with the provinces at that time, and I want to make sure that we stay on the right track here and, and don't lose momentum, because I think those policies certainly, the intention was that they were going to serve us very, very well. So, I want to be clear that we're all on the same page here. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. If we could, we'll just continue, we'll finish with this motion, and then you can address those comments. CAO, is that okay? Is that okay?
I'm sorry, I thought we had voted on that.
With the, there be no further discussion with the building activity report. We have a motion. Receive the 2019 fourth quarter building permit activity report and the 2018-2019 total building activity comparison. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Angima, thank you. Those in favor? And those opposed? That is carried. Mr. CAO, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor's question around the town's Heritage Citizen Advisory Committee and maybe some next steps. I think one of the things that, from a staff perspective, we've been talking about is really around, I think there would be some benefit to a sort of heritage one-on-one workshop being struck, and a number of staff have had some conversations with our provincial representatives at the ministry in order to facilitate some of that work. We do have a staff person, Monica Kokiera, who is the staff lead, the staff representative on that heritage committee, and definitely will be working with her and planning staff, Kathleen and her team, to facilitate, I think, some of this training. I think there would be a benefit in light of just the changing landscape around heritage and the importance that heritage plays in a lot of the decision-making that the municipality is facing. And so, as I highlighted, we have been in touch with the Ontario Heritage Trust and the ministry that oversees that particular, that particular organization and that particular group. We do have some information in terms of technical resources that are available that we can definitely share, but I think facilitating and pulling together a training session of sorts for the committee and members of council for that matter, I think would be very beneficial.
Mr. Chairman, that would be very beneficial, absolutely. As I looked through these minutes, and I went through them very, very carefully, there are a number of suggestions here that where positions have already been taken by council and where there was information available from senior staff in particular that would direct how we, how we proceed. So, I think that, that education session would be very valuable. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. We have now concluded the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda. We will now rotate to allow Chair Mikulak to assume the chair at this time for the General Business and Finance Committee agenda.
So, we're moving on to the General Business and Finance Committee agenda. Item 7.1, delegations. We have no delegations this evening for the General Business and Finance Committee agenda. We'll move on to 7.2, consent agenda. We have no consent agenda items this evening. So, we'll move on to 7.3, reports. We are now considering item 7.3, report LS-02-20, provision of legal services, request for proposal award. Do we have any concerns, comments? If I may, I'll ask the, our CAO, the process that was involved with regards to this report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. I think just to provide council a little bit of background on this, because I think this is an exciting initiative, it's a great report that you have in front of you, and our clerk, Ms. Kirklos, can also provide some information following my, I think, high-level overview. She's been very involved with the clerk from Grimsby, actually, in this, and some of the Grimsby staff, and we can definitely address any particular questions. I think for, for everyone's benefit, and council will know this, in the past, we have used multiple vendors, up to eight, just this past year, but more previously, when we look at legal and when we look at the types of legal issues we have, costs vary depending on those legal files, I think that doesn't come as a surprise. And so, when we were going through this year's budget, and one of the things that's been on our work plan and on council's work plan for staff to look at is, where do we find efficiencies, where do we look at better ways of doing the business that we're responsible for doing? And one of those, we believed, was looking at legal services and the costs associated with those. And so, we have gone through a RFP exercise. At the same time, as we were looking at this, conversations were being had around various shared services, around looking at what are other municipalities doing. So, we've actually gone out at the same time as our counterparts to the west in Grimsby to look for legal services and to look for a vendor to supply those legal services. And so, we have before you a report this evening that looks to appoint the agency of record that is listed within the report, and Grimsby will be going forward on March 2nd. I will actually be at that March 2nd committee meeting at Grimsby Council in order to speak to the benefits of this. I do want to say that the two aren't necessarily dependent on one another. Lincoln will make a decision this evening, and that decision will remain once ratified at council. But just, I think, to highlight from the perspective of what are the benefits of doing this, I think absolutely there's an administrative element to this, an administrative benefit that really lowers the costs of administrative procedures, separate tenders, and there's always a benefit to that. There's the financial benefit, of course, and the cost savings that have been associated as a result of this. Alone in disbursements, we're seeing approximately a 50 percent savings to the Town of Lincoln on that one particular element, and of course, the hourly rates that we were able to negotiate. And of course, just the competency-related benefits, so, the contracting authorities, the procurement expertise that goes into this. There is and there will be, I think, a very significant benefit and a streamlined benefit, and we look forward to. Any questions council may have? Again, Julie may have some additional comments she wants to make, but definitely a positive step forward, both from a shared services perspective, but also from the perspective of looking at taxpayer dollars and making sure that we are finding efficiencies in the best ways of doing things.
Yeah, I'd like to add that I think that's fantastic that we're willing to share services with another municipality and partner and package a deal that would benefit our town as a whole, especially with the legal challenges that every municipality faces with the various issues that arise. I think it's a fantastic idea to, let's call it buying in bulk when it comes to legal services, so, I think I, it was good to see this one. So, no, no questions? Nope. We have the mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a few comments about some of the experiences that we've had. I'm pleased to see that the choice that has been made, because we certainly can say here at the Town of Lincoln that this has been an extremely reliable group to work with. They're highly organized and very, very well-prepared. If you ever had a chance to attend an OMB hearing where they're representing our interests, you're certainly, it certainly is a pleasure to watch them move our issues forward. And I would say in terms of complexity and the variety of cases that they've managed over several years, it really demonstrates how, the level of expertise that they have. They've always demonstrated a very good rapport with council, very reliable advice, and their availability. I've had personal experience on occasion when I've had to seek the services of legal counsel, and when the person that normally would respond to our calls, if he isn't available, he immediately has someone that you can deal with. So, there's never any delays. So, I'm hoping, Mr. Chairman, through you to the CAO, that our current contact is going to continue with this file. And of course, you know, the comments about both the administrative and financial benefits are excellent, but it's always a very good sign when you can respond to an external expectation about better performance, both financially and just in terms of the go-forward. Procurement, joint procurement is not easy, so I want to compliment the staff for the work that they've done on this. I felt that the documents that we received were extremely comprehensive. It's the first time that we've done something like this here, and there are certainly lots of safeguards that are built into this, this agreement. So, I'm very happy that we were able to achieve the efficiencies. Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a question from page 24 of the document, but it's page 45 of the package this evening. Comes under 6.7, and it deals with liability. And the question that I have is whether or not the, the legal representation, when it comes to liability, do they operate independently in regard to the standards of practice as laid out by the Law Society or any other professional body that they, that they are accountable to? Or does the firm assume any liability for their representatives?
Shall I put that to the CAO or Ms., Mrs. Kirklos? Or Mrs. Kirklos? Sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. Let me take a stab at that, and then I think Julie can both address the process we went through and if she's got anything to add into this particular one. My thought would be that, that most lawyers, and my familiarity with the legal profession would be such that both the firm and the individual lawyer carry a certain indemnification, they carry a certain assurance. Ms. Kirklos is nodding in agreement to that, but that would be my understanding, Mayor Easton, that both the lawyer themselves and the adherence they have to the Law Society and their code of ethics provides for that insurance and assurance, as does the firm with which we are being represented by.
Okay. And my second question, Mr. Chairman, would be from page 28, under 6.17, the insurance requirements, and what I'm looking for here is an explanation of the paragraph that starts, "The policy shall not be altered to the detriment of the town." Procedurally, I was trying to determine exactly what that paragraph meant.
Ms. Kirklos, do you like to take a turn?
Hi, good evening. So, just to make sure I'm answering in the right section, it is page 50, 6.
It's page 49.
1, 7.1, mandatory coverage, is that where you're under?
No, it's, it's item 6.17, and it's on page 28 of the legal report, at page 49 of the package.
Insurance requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it's the third paragraph.
Okay, and your question is around liability and insurance that they're covered under?
Well, the question is really on paragraph that starts, "The policy shall not be altered to the detriment of the town." I don't, I don't, I'm trying to determine what that, what that means. What, is it the insurance policies? Exactly what is it?
Madam Mayor, it's the contract. So, it's referring to the contract. So, it says, "The policy shall not be altered to the detriment of the town canceled or allowed to lapse within 60 days written notice to the corporation of the Town of Grimsby and shall remain in force from contract execution to the end of the contract." It's in reference to the contract.
Okay, so, it means that the contract shall not be altered to the detriment of the town, meaning the Town of Lincoln. It won't be canceled or allowed to lapse within 60 days written notice, so there will also be 60 days written notice to the corporation of the Town of Grimsby. Okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on this. It's excellent.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, questions? Just one more point I want to make, just, apparently there were 17 firms, 17 firms put a, submitted a proposal. I think that says a lot to the package that we prepared and the interest that we gained by doing that, and that makes me feel good that we, we did indeed get a good price. There's nothing worse than when you submit an RFP and you only receive one or two tenders. Nothing worse than that. So, when you receive 17, it says, says a lot to the credibility of our town and the interest that other firms want to be a part of. So, I, I'm impressed with the, that RFP proposal and the interest that we gained and the outcome, hopefully, should we approve. Okay, so, that being said, we have a motion that Legal Services, Legislative Services report LS-02-20, request for proposal for provision of legal services be approved, and that the firm of Eard and Bearless LLP be retained as primary legal counsel for the corporation of the Town of Lincoln for a period of four years, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the contract documents. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Russell. All those in favor? Those opposed? Carried unanimously. All right, next we have, we are now considering item 7.4, report FN-02-20, Tile Drainage Program Are there any questions from council? We have the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This, I don't have any questions about the report, but I do have a question about who will evaluate, when the, when the application comes in, who will evaluate any flooding impact that could occur on adjacent property or properties below, if this happens to be on the escarpment, properties below, as the, an impact of directing the flow of groundwater into more of a central flow?
So, you're concerned about the, the water and where it goes and who may be negatively impacted?
Yes. Is there any, because I looked at all of the instructions from the Ontario, from the commenting agencies about how you were to apply, and the instructions from OMAFRA. I didn't see any responsibilities there for the property owner if there are issues of flooding on other people's property.
I think we have a professional here that can answer that question. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. So, when a applicant makes an application to the town who wants to do tile drainage work on, on their property, what we do as staff is we go out and look at the site and in accordance with OMAFRA as well, we really look at where they're going to outlet the tile to, whether it's a legal outlet, and, you know, is it going to be, if it's going to be on someone else's property, then, you know, that could be an issue, and we have to, you know, work out those, those arrangements with other property owners. So, really, our, our view of it is, is the outlet a legal outlet inadequate to accept the drainage? There's not a, I guess, depending on the situation, there isn't a lot of detailed analysis around what the impact might be to the, to the receiving outlet area. It's more so, is the outlet a legal outlet? That's kind of the objective with the OMAFRA best practices. I don't know if that helped or not, but.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I guess I need a definition of a legal outlet, because on some farms, the water is directed to a holding area. Is that always the case through you, Mr. Chairman?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. So it kind of depends, some farms, it depends on what, sometimes farmers might put it into a bit of a holding pond, they may want to use that water. Other times, a legal outlet, we want to make sure, you know, is it, if it's within the road allowance, a lot of times they try and get them to the roadside ditches. That's considered a legal outlet, you know, have to do erosion control and all that kind of modification at the outlet not to cause a problem. But what we want to, or if they can't get to a municipal roadway roadside ditch, they may have to outlet onto another person's property if that's kind of the natural drainage. We would make sure that that other property owner is involved in this and agrees and gives permission if that's going to happen. So it would be legal. A farmer couldn't just go put a tile drainage to someone else's property without their permission or being involved in that process, because we don't want to cause any negative impacts as a result of that.
Right. Mr. Chairman, then finally, through you, has that always been the, is that the due diligence that we have always applied?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to mayor, yes, if the town is administering it, yeah. There are tile drainage work that does occur where the town isn't involved, and, you know, maybe that hasn't occurred, I don't know, but if it's through this program, yes is the answer.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. We have Counselor Pachariva.
Thank you, Chairman McCullough. Yeah, and just response to the mayor's query about that, it says in the, under municipalities' responsibility, the council must appoint a drainage inspector to inspect the tile drainage work and file an inspection report. So I would, I would suppose that if there's drainage affecting the downstream property owner, that that would be noted in this file report, because then that would trigger the repayment. So the works have to be in order, and then the money is outletted, so. It's a couple of checks and balances in there.
I would agree, and I think the province has guidelines as far as approval of the application for the loan as well. We have Counselor Reimer.
Just to add a few comments to that, if you go to the fact sheet about the tile loan program, in order to be approved, you have to have a licensed tile drainage designer, engineer, fairly stringent qualifications for that, and they take into effect outlets, diameter size, area of water to be drained, type of soil, all those kind of things are taken into that. And so generally, most of the concerns that you raised, Mayor Easton, are taken in by that licensed, the person who designs that. And I think most farmers have licensed installers do their work, and that's part of their licensing is that they abide by some of those rules and regulations that are put in place for these loans.
That's good. Just, I had a couple of questions myself, just with regards to the uptake of this program. When I first read this program, it appears to be a good deal. It appears to be a good program and one that would benefit farmers that could be possibly cash-strapped when it comes to upgrading their farm. And I was surprised that there was only one currently taking advantage of the program and one investigating it. Is there any, I'm just curious how we promote this program or how, any explanation as to why we might think it's not been very popular?
So to you, Chair, the province sets the interest rate on it. The most recent one for the 2018, 2019 year, it was a 6% interest, which is pretty comparative to what you can get at a bank. And it's a 10-year payback, so the loan itself is pretty comparative to what they can get at a bank. The benefit is that it doesn't eat into the equity of their own ability to borrow if they come through this loan program. As to the promoting it, I'm going to let Carrie speak to it a little bit. We had a little bit of a discussion about it already.
Perfect.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. We can reach out to a number of, it requires sort of a bit of a targeted communication, so we can reach out through our economic development officer to a number of the specific farming communities, through either the vine land growers, the grape growers, lots of the different agricultural societies, and let them know about the program as a reminder.
Perfect, yeah. I know there's various Farmers Monthly or Farmer magazines that might be able to. And then I had another question or two, just how do we know, is the province, do we know if the province is going to continue this program? And, or have, it was stated somewhere in April that we'd find out, do we know before we promote it or before we encourage it?
To you, Chair, there's been no indication from the province that they're even looking at this program in terms of efficiencies. It wouldn't be to their benefit as they're the ones that collect all of the interest. They, they charge, whatever we get charged, we then get it back directly from the resident, and that goes to the province. So they earn the interest on this program, but they don't actually administer it. So there's not any downside for the province, and they haven't indicated that it's something that they're looking at either. But it is, we do let any applicants know that it's subject to provincial approval, which comes closer to the end of their fiscal year, which is March 31st.
Okay, and that leads into another question I was going to have is, with regards to that, it states that there's no financial impact to us as a municipality, but there is a bit of logistics on our part and a little bit of effort involved. Is that factored in, or how do we recoup that, or is that part of the equation?
So to you, we don't earn anything for the loan itself. We are able to charge an inspection fee. I think the last one was about $200, so we recoup some of the inspection costs. And the administration of the project, or the program itself, is fairly minimal. So for the farmers who see a benefit in it, it's part of our service to them.
Very good. Thank you very much. No further questions. So, we have a motion, there being no, so there being no further discussion, we have a motion, receive and file FN-02-20, 2020 Tile Drainage Loan Program, and confirm Town of Lincoln participation in the tile drainage loan program for the 2020 calendar year. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Pachariva. All those in favor? Those opposed? We have unanimous decision. So we have now concluded the General Business and Finance Committee agenda. We will now rotate to allow Chair Renjima to assume the chair at this time for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda.
Good evening, everyone. This commences the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda. Item 8.1 is delegations. We have no delegations this evening for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda. Item 8.2 and 8.3 is the consent agenda. We are now considering the consent agenda, which includes museum artifact donations and age-friendly minutes from the meeting of January 9th, 2020. Would any member like to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss? There being no one, we will require a mover for the motion to pass items 8.2 and 8.3 on the consent agenda. Counselor Pachariva. All in favor? The motion is carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is reports, and we are considering item 8.4, a report regarding the Hickson Pumping Station upgrades. Are there any questions from counsel on that item? Counselor Pachariva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, it's maybe just a typo, but it says we're awarding the contractor Lakeside Contractor Company an amount of $571,301.50, except on the tender submissions and the estimated project cost, it's $567,451.50. So those two don't match. So wondering, is that a typo? Should it be $567,451.50?
Thank you, Counselor Pachariva. I'm going to pass that over to, we're going to pause for a moment.
Looks like Jillian's report.
Director Graham.
Through Madam Chair, apologize. It is a typo, so the, the number located on the table one is the correct number, so we'll make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Graham. Thank you, Counselor Pachariva, for the question. Are there any other questions to this report? Seeing none, there being no further discussion? The new number, thank you. So I'll read the motion. To receive for information, Report PW-0220, Hickson Pumping Station Upgrades Tender Award, approve the award of RFT 2019-022PW to Lakeside Contractor Company in the amount of $567,451.50. Approve the mayor and clerk to sign and seal the contract documents on behalf of the municipality. We will require a mover for the motion, Counselor Pachariva. All in favor? That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. We are now considering item 8.5, Report PW-0420, Summary Report for Beamsville Distribution and Jordan Vine Land Water Distribution System, January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. Staff will provide a presentation. Please come forward. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for having us this evening. For those of you that have never met Vanny Yu, Vanny Yu is our compliance coordinator within Environmental Services. So just to go over our presentation tonight, these are all legislated through the DWQMS requirements, so we'll be doing an overview of the report structure, the Beamsville and Jordan Vine Land Distribution Systems, our legislative compliance, flow and loss data, infrastructure overview, monitoring improvement, staffing information, and then our DWQMS system and spotlight on 2020.
Our Beamsville Distribution System services approximately 16,000. We have approximately 65 kilometers of water main, and we have one booster station with a backup generator and one bulk water filling station. Jordan Vine Land Distribution System services approximately 7,500 residents. We have 42 kilometers of water main, and we have two small booster pumping stations. Both systems are currently Class II, and we are anticipating reclassification to a Class III within the next few years. So for legislative compliance, last year, Beamsville, we didn't have any incidents of adverse. Jordan Vine Land, we had one last June, it was a total call form, and we had a total of 2,353 samples collected.
From a legislative compliance requirement, the Ministry of the Environment does complete an audit every year. This year was completed November 14th, 2019. It was a detailed annual inspection. We received a 100% risk rating for the Beamsville system. We received a 91% risk rating for the Jordan Vine Land system. This was due to an error in communication, which the town identified the missed communication prior to the ministry being aware. But unfortunately, it still does result in a non-compliance, and was noted within our annual report that the town did resolve it even prior to the ministry being aware. And as of that, there were no recommended improvement items. We also complete an internal and external audit every year. Sorry, the reaccreditation audit is every few years. But we did have the internal audit completed in June, no major or minor nonconformances, six opportunities for improvements. They're just, they're minor things just to improve our program and make everything just, ensure that training is as appropriate. Our external reaccreditation audit was completed by SII Global. There's two companies to select from that our ministry approved, and that was completed in December 2018, with the report information coming in January 2019. Again, no major or minor nonconformances, and only one opportunity for improvement during that. Our flow data, as you can see, we do have a decreasing trend since 2010. It has relatively stabilized, and what we would expect within both the Beamsville and Jordan Vine Land system, given kind of the changes in faucets and whatnot through. Our water loss data, we are at 15.7% average for the year, so generally, across the board, since 2016, we are on a declining trend. We have, you will see an increasing trend since 2016. The key items for these are meter errors, so we are going through our meter program right now. So we do expect to recoup about 5% to 10% of losses from this. Leaks unknown, we do have a leak detection program that is happening, but there can be other locations. Also, flushing and water main breaks, we do lose water during that, and we can't capture it. There's no quantifiable way to capture how much water was lost. Firefighting, we also don't know how much water is used during the firefighting. Again, we can make assumptions based off of pumps, but we don't capture all of these. Also, the training during firefighting is not captured. We are improving that and working with fire to try and tighten up that information. And then illegal connections, we don't foresee an issue. We do drive around and try to identify if there are kind of wet areas, or if we think that there has been some potential tampering, but it's not great. The other item where we don't actually track the water usage is in some developments, so we do charge them a bulk amount, and generally, that does cover the total, typically, the total amount of water that would be anticipated, but it doesn't, we don't actually have that exact value. So these are just some of the things contributing. It should be noted that 10% is typically what's a tight system. A lot of municipalities are well over 10%, so within Niagara, we are a reasonable percentage for water loss. For our infrastructure rehabilitation and repairs, we had 12 breaks over 2019, nine of them in Beamsville, three in Jordan Vine Land, zero in the Vine Land West private water system, which is now part of the Jordan Vine Land system, and will not be reported after this update. And we had one on the regional water main on Ontario Street, which is not included in this graph. in this graph. So for the updates of what we've done, again, a great job replacing all of the metallic pipe. We have zero kilometers left of cast iron, about 10%, just over 10% of the ductile and then line cast iron. So again, 10.2% remaining, and over the next 10 years, it's anticipated that those will be down to zero. So the infrastructure performance metrics, again, a significant amount of work done by the staff. Over 1,200 work orders completed, and I'd like to note that a number of those work orders were multiple work orders within as well, 700 secondary reads, so those wouldn't have been, those would have been in bulk within the work orders. Again, Vanna noted 2353 samples. Locates were over 2,000, which also goes in line with the building permit applications and other things that are happening and the growing nature of Lincoln. And then again, we are flushing all of our hydrants and exercising our valves. For the staff, as much as we have the Environmental Services team, it's also important to note that we do work closely with a number of other groups. So with the engineering services, building and planning, roads and fleet, finance and fire, we do work closely with all of them. Our operators have also been very active and kind of improving in their class designation. So we do have three Class III operators that are ready for when we do become a Class III system, and then we have three operators that are Level II and progressing towards their level, or their Class III as well.
So our DWQMS pictured here is our policy, which is in the library. We did our review last year, no change to it. Some of the other things we do for our DWQMS yearly is a risk assessment, internal and external audits, infrastructure review, management review, and we deal those with continuous improvement for the DWQMS.
And then finally, just for a spotlight on 2020, it is growth and looking forward, so we have started our communication with the Ministry of the Environment about what would be the trigger for the Class II to Class III system. They currently are investigating, and will be getting back to us with the evaluation and what they anticipate. So we are projecting adding approximately 10 kilometers of water mains. This includes the hydrants, valves, and meters associated with it throughout the developments happening in Beamsville and Jordan Vineland. And just again, to make aware of additional operating staff resources required as the growth becomes, as we further monitor and assess it on an ongoing basis. We are keeping track of our man-hours and our, the work orders that are in place and our locates, and what the requirements are. So right now, we're managing okay, but we are keeping a close eye on it as to how it goes, and if we have to do some additional planning on top of succession planning as well. So are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have Counselor Pachariva with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Jillian and Vanna, for the presentation. Thanks for addressing the concerns with respect to water loss, because, you know, since 2016, we've been trending up, and I find that problematic, but with the changing on, especially when the number of breaks has gone down, so, but with the replacement of the water meters, we look to see that going down, so that's moving in the right direction. Just want to highlight, too, the replacement of water mains. So there is no ductile iron remaining in the ground. Prior councils like to get kicked around, but this is one of the ones that I'm very, very proud of. As infrastructure chair, we took on an aggressive replacement program, and we don't have anything left in the system. These are ones that typically break. Now, we're going to systematically go after the cement-lined ones, and hopefully, we can be as expeditious as we were on the ductile with the cement lined, and maybe even go more aggressively after that. With respect to, and again, having sat through the water training program, and, you know, Flint, Michigan, and Cincinnati, and you name it, I'm still a bit uneasy at the compliance of backflow prevention at 74.5%. I mean, personally, that should be 100. There's no ifs, ands, or buts why you shouldn't be doing it. We've heard various excuses, you know, from businesses, why they shouldn't. To me, it's a cost of doing business, because you're ensuring that clean water is being delivered to the residents of the municipality. We're all liable for the delivery of that clean water, and God forbid, something happens that something gets backflowed into the system. Our necks are the ones on the line, not the people that are experiencing malfeasance. So wondering how we're going to address that. Like, if you need us to do something, to make a bylaw to say, you know what, you've got 30 days to do it, or we shut your water off. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. We pussyfooted around this for 10 years. It's time to put up or turn off. So just your thoughts, Jillian, on this.
Through you, Madam Chair. So it's important to note that the 75% is actually the testing compliance rate, so we have 24% of businesses that are not doing their annual testing. We have improved and reduced, I don't have the number offhand, of the limited amount of locations that don't have devices installed. I can say that Vanna has been going with bylaws while going to the businesses that are not involved, and we are working with them to try and get those last few involved. I will note that late April, May, we will be bringing forward improvements to the bylaw, or recommendations for improvements to the bylaw to be considered, which include some enforcement, and also bringing the bylaw, or bringing the backflow requirements more in line with what the building code requires, and that will be, again, brought forward late April, May. We're just working on that right now. What we are bringing forward is after, so following my presentation last year, we've done extensive consultation with the other municipalities across Ontario, finding out what's working for them, what's not working for them, and which ones have the greatest success, and then also just overall compliance rates. So I can say that there is not a single municipality that has 100% compliance, but they can definitely be in that 90, high 80 range, and we do aim to get to, within that 90 block is our ultimate goal. But again, we'll be bringing that forward for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. And my bad for not picking up on the testing part, but you know what? I'd like to be the first one that gets into 100, right? I mean, there's no, you've got to shoot for something. Just because everyone else isn't there doesn't mean we can't be there. Just a question, too, with respect to the water replacement program. Had mine done a couple of weeks ago, it was easy. You know, you set up the appointment online, they come within two days to replace it. Wondering how we're making on that, and just an observation, and I know we're doing it based on the RFID, but when they installed the meter, it would have made sense to me to have it so you can read the numbers, rather than install it on its side. So you kind of got to get down on one knee and turn and look like, I don't know whether it's something to do with the meter, it's got to be installed that way, or, you know, what is that, a 90-degree twist would have had it bang on and easy to read. I know my mother is, you know, 82 years old and is down in the basement, you know, trying to read this thing, because they said to look at the first reading, and, you know, gets a cramp in her hip, and yells at me to come over and read it. So I'm just thinking, am I, you know, common sense would dictate, make it easy to read. So just wondering if we're the exceptions.
So through you, Madam Chair. I guess to address the meter head orientation first, it's, different meter companies have different orientation of the meter head itself, so some, how some are installed for residents, it will be sitting properly. For others, because of how it was installed, it shifted. I've actually talked with Neptune, because we have had a few people wondering. It's a very small percentage of the population that actually reads their meter. We have, we had one resident ask if it was possible to turn the meter head, and yes, Neptune can do that, if you would like your, the reading head turned, so that it's a straight-up rate. So that is, that is an option.
Well, thank you, Jillian. I'm just thinking, you know, I go back to, back to days at the Grimsby IGA, and if you do it right the first time, you don't have to go back. So, I mean, it's a little common sense thing, so I would maybe say to Neptune, why don't you make them right side? Makes it easier.
Thank you, Counselor. I guess to address the other question, just about the progress itself, we have installed over 70% of the meters to date, so as of the end of today, we should have installed over 4,500 meters through the program. Again, minimal, very limited, under 10% of concerns being brought forward, and Neptune is addressing them well. Overall, a positive feedback from the program, and we are moving forward and have another booked, I'm hoping by the end of this week, to have us at about 1,000 meters left to be booked, or to be able to break down into that 900s moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Pachariva. And I have an idea. You can take a picture of it, and then turn your camera and look at your, or turn your phone over and look at it. That'll save your hip. Okay, next I have Counselor Mikulik.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I don't know, I see this one adverse water quality incident in Jordan Vineland. I live in Jordan. Is this a case of muddy water or mercury poisoning? Like, what exactly is adverse, and what harm or possible threat is it to the public?
So through you, Madam Chair. The occurrence that happened was one total coliform. Typically, when we see that, it means it's human air, so it's either, there was a slight contact with the bottle by the operator taking the sample, or there could have been an air made in the lab. What would happen with this situation is total coliform not equal high, which is obviously the worst situation. But what you do is, it's not considered, it's not considered a true full adverse until you do a re-sample. So we flush the line, we make sure that everything's fine. It's also to note that the chlorine residuals were above what, were within the window that the ministry does require, so that also indicates that it's likely an operator air within that testing. So while we identify that it was one situation, that their backup testing shows that it was just that, it was an operator air.
So it would be no need to notify the public? Okay, and then I have another question. Through you, Madam Chair. Back in June, we had a major water main break on Ontario Street, where the water reservoir actually was noticeably low, and pressure was down. How, when we look at the water loss at 15% or 10% or 8%, is there a way of guesstimating how much water we might have lost in any particular incident?
Through you, Madam Chair. So with that incident, because again, we did have the reservoir, the region was able to estimate the losses, and they did remove that off of what they reported to the town for supply, and they also did not bill us for that water.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Mikulik. Next, Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Chair. And Jima, to the presenters, Jillian Vanna, thank you for the report. I had a couple of questions, just to pick up on Counselor Mikulik's first comment. During the course of the year, the, having sampled water myself, the many different ways that contamination and false samples can be, can happen, and the amount of, you know, kilometers of pipe that we have, all the areas that can infiltrate or contaminate our system to have the numbers that they've reached are pretty incredible. So it's congratulations to you for those numbers. It is, it is, yes, I think it's incredible. So, two questions. The criteria to go to Class II to Class III, I might have missed it, what triggers that? Or do we have any, do we have any input in that, or do they make us go to Class III?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's actually about a 10-page point system, and it covers everything from kilometers of pipe to population served, to number of PRVs in the system, number of pumps in the system, so it's a pretty complex algorithm. We attempted to look at kind of what we anticipated, but ultimately, it's the ministry that does the evaluation, and it's ministry that mandates what class we are.
And then, other than, when we go to Class III, other than our operators that need to be trained for Class III, is there any else, like, does that designation put us into something else that requires more, that require more in the budget next year, let's say, other than the training of our staff?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, the only impacts would be related to training of our staff, as it does require additional hours for the staff for training every year.
Yeah, okay. And one other question, if I may, Chair and Jima, just regarding the Vineland West water main. So that is ours?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. September, we provided notification to all the residents within that area, as well as the ministry, and identified that it is now a town asset.
Okay, and so they all have, as far as billing goes, Jillian, they have meters, and it just works like, you know, everywhere else in the system?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Reimer. Counselor Russell is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to Ms. Harris. I know we've had some conversations or some communications through email the last week or so, and I just want to touch on the, some of the malfunctions with the water meters that are currently happening, to a very low percentage. I heard it was maybe under 10 was from your commentary. Is the issue, is it a systemic issue? Is it, from what I've heard from some of the residents, particularly in Ward 1, which seems to be kind of localized to our area, is that it might all be related to the same situation, where there's a miscommunication between the device itself? Or can you give us more information on what the actual issue might be?
So through you, Madam Chair. The issue that your ward is experiencing right now is tied to an internal processing issue, and not related to the meters or Neptune.
So it's just strictly on, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, it's strictly on the actual billing and the data being pulled from the actual meters?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. So I guess through you, Madam Chair. Ultimately, the information that is being provided from the meters is accurate, and then what is being sent over to our, where the error was, was in a processing within our accounting team, within the accounting software, that has been resolved, and we've identified where the error can occur, and put additional safeguards in place to prevent that from happening again. So the meters aren't reading high or anything like that, and the data that's being sent from the meters to the software is.
Again, I think it should also just be noted that the actual read period is longer than what a traditional period would be. I think it was for three and three-quarter months, almost four months, as opposed to a normal three, so residents that I know that I've talked to specifically, after pointing that out, and then they go back and look at their prior reading, they realize they may have caught a bit of a break on the prior one, and it's being caught up on this one just because of the way the billing cycle was. Is that correct?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. So what is in place, and we're going to improve communication through that, is that your first bill following the replacement of your meter will likely be a three-and-a-half to four-month period, as opposed to the standard three-month period, just because we can get that information right up to when we bill, as opposed to having the lag between sending a staff out to read it, and then have to process and enter everything through. Following that, all of the bills will be your typical three-month cycle.
Okay, perfect. I know, again, in the residents I've spoken with, after pointing that out, there's a little bit of relief coming through, that their next bill will be, again, on the normal defined path, and I think they're happy about that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Russell. CAO wants to speak to the item as well.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. I think just to summarize, it really was a processing error, Counselor, and we've rectified it, as you know, and so we have the proper, I think, quality assurance in place now. And so residents, this was just on this bill. They will go back to the three months, and we're going to add some additional communication to the bills as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplis. Madam Mayor, you also wanted to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could look at page seven, under Flow Data. Terry, don't go away, because I think you're probably the one that will answer this. I just wanted to point out that... I just wanted to point out that, I mean, we're decreasing, and this is a trend that's occurring across the region, where there is, municipalities are actually drawing less water from the region, and we are charged at a fixed rate, not a variable rate. So even though we are using less water, people are conserving and using less water, it doesn't mean that our water rates are going down. And so, Madam Chair, through you, I think we should have some explanation of this, if that's possible this evening. I think it would be very relative to, or very relevant to this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm that I'm answering the question correctly, do you want to address why the flows are going down, or the overall billing process from the region?
Well, maybe you could talk about why the flows are going down, and then talk about the rates.
Okay, so overall, flows are going down from water conservation measures, so that's just from the faucets themselves. So showerheads are becoming low-flow, toilets are low-flow, that side of it. People are just more aware of water conservation practices as well. We also, while we still have people watering their lawns, and people have reduced their usage within that as well. From the billing side, I'm going to have you speak to the regional billing.
So through the Chair, there is still the fixed cost that needs to remain in order to operate a water system. There are parts of it that can be tied directly to the amount of flow, and so the region gives us the estimate for the annual budget of how much they'll require, and then we pass that on to the residents in their monthly billing, or quarterly billing.
Right. So, Madam Chair, my point is that people should not be looking for a decrease in the cost of water, even though very significant improvements have been made in water conservation, and also the condition of our equipment. It's not, the rates are not going down, because we are not, we are not charged by the region on a variable rate as it goes up and down. We're charged a fixed rate, which represents what it costs to operate the system.
Through the Chair, that's correct. Where the conservation helps, though, is that with the lower flow, we don't need to upsize as fast as we would if people were using more and more of the water.
That's a good point. Madam Chair, on page twelve, thank you very much. On page twelve, I'm just looking at the staffing here, and I think this is a very good report for us to have for all departments, to be able to look at the volume of work that's being done, in this case, very specialized work, work that requires a high level of accuracy, and one, as Counselor Pachivah stated, is directly related to the accountability that we have as counselors, which, under law, is quite severe if we fail to do our, fail to ensure that we have enough staff available to do the due diligence that is required. So, again, I'm very pleased with the report, and thank you very much, staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And next, I have Counselor Mikulik with a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, yeah, the mayor's got me looking at this chart twice, and with regards to the flow data and the conservation and this sort of thing. But we've had, we've had quite a bit of growth within the community with regards to residential commercial build and water usage. Is the conservation that much that it offsets the consumption by new residential builds?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes. It's been trending that way for about the past ten, fifteen years, and each year you do get it a bit better. Why we're stabilizing is because of that additional growth now. So just, in general, people still try to conserve and improve their conservation measures, but as more people are coming up, it creates, with all of the building that we are having, we are also just starting to see a lot of these homes coming online, and the population starting to come up over the past year and then next year. So I suspect that, well, we may see a slight increase over the next few years, as those larger subdivisions that we have do come online, and the additional water is being used.
Thank you. And I did compare that with the earlier report with the Building Bermit data, in 2015 and 2016, you can see there's a slight increase, and then it goes down a little bit. But if I may, is this a typical trend within growing municipalities with regards to these consumption rates?
Through you, Madam Chair. I can't speak to the other municipalities, because I haven't looked into it. I just do know that through our conferences, there is an overall conversation about water conservation methods being so efficient, and just downward trends in water usage across Ontario.
Okay. Just looking for trends, that's embarrassing.
I have no more questions from committee members, but I have a question myself, and I ask this, I think, every couple of years, or every year, and it's going to be actually to our CAO, and the question is about staffing. The mayor touched on it, it's very, it's very important that we have the right people in place, and that we continue to. So my question is going to be about our plans for replacing staff and the future succession plans, and whether we're confident with what we have in place.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm going to let Gillian, I think, start that question, and if there's anything I need to add, I will afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We do have a number of staff within the frontline staff, who also have their operator and training licenses, and we do bring them in throughout the year as well for various tasks, so that they can get experience. We do send them to some training as well, just to make sure that their license, their operator and training license is complete. So in the event that we do have some retirements, which are upcoming, as we do have some staff with a significant amount of years with the town, we do have the ability to have a posting and bring in staff that are aware of our system, and also have the license requirements as the ministry does require.
That's what I like to hear. But also, so is it true, it's a bit of a competitive industry at the labor market, that's hard to get good people in the water services specialty?
It is a competitive market. It's also, it can speak to council support of training with our staff, and also management as well, and their support of training. We do have excellent, excellent operators, very knowledgeable of our system, and they are more than willing to help with the training as well. So if we do have a new staff member come on board, I'm confident that we can get them up to. Where we do also just, I guess, to highlight this, Brett Scobie, who is one of the operators listed as a Class Two operator, when we presented last year, he was an operator and trainer. So he actually went through and got all of his experience, was increased to a Class One, and then increased to a Class Two. So we do work very hard with our staff to bring them up to the point that we want them to be confident as well.
Thank you.
And through you, Madam Chair. If I could just add to that, I think this council has supported, over the years, at least since I've been here, and I would say prior to that, any staffing requirements that are in place, things that are legislated and mandated like this, I have no qualms, I have no concerns that this council wouldn't support that. Should that be the position that we find ourselves in, but I think that reinforcement, that council is both supportive and thinking about the staffing requirements when our system does get upgraded, is a good thing. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplis, and Counselor Russell has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a little point of clarification. So on the monthly flows for Beamsville and Jordan, it seems like there's a little bit of anomaly, where if you're looking at the trending for Beamsville, it seems to follow the traditional seasonality of water usage. And then in Jordan, it seems that in June, it's on page thirteen of your summary report, there seems to be a big drop in June in Jordan. Any reason why that might be?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is the flows that were presented from the region, and what we suspect is, remember how I noted that we had a major break, and the region did not bill us for water during that time? We suspect that they took it off of the Jordan Vineland portion, as opposed to the Beamsville portion.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
So there are no more questions, so thank you very much for your presentation. I have a motion to read. The motion reads that we receive and file the Public Works Report PW-0420 regarding the water distribution for Beamsville and Jordan Vineland, January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019. We require a mover for the motion, Counselor Pachivah. All in favor? That's carried unanimously. We are now considering item 8.6, Report PW-0520, Rittenhouse Road Project Bike Lane Review. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Timmers?
Thank you, Chair Rajima. I have an email that I'd like to read from Counselor Tony Bernay, who couldn't be here this evening. He has some comments regarding the Rittenhouse Road project. So it's a bit of an email, so bear with me, and I will read it to you.
Counselor Bernay did send that yesterday, and let me know that he's going to ask you to read it, so.
Okay. As I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, I would like to pass along my thoughts on Community Services and Infrastructure Report PW-0520, Rittenhouse Road Project and Bike Lane Review. In my opinion, the current design of the reconstruction of Rittenhouse Road focuses on addressing the key concerns that were heard at the October 24th, 2019 PIC. Pedestrian safety was, will be greatly improved by the installation of new sidewalks all along the street, especially for children walking to 20 Valley School. Speed reduction and traffic calming measures will be achieved by raised crosswalks and speed humps at Glendale and Honeysuckle Crescent, as well as having them signed as safe pedestrian crossings. Through the urbanization of Rittenhouse Road, new sidewalks, raised crosswalks at two intersections, curb bumpouts, and the narrowing of the King Street intersection, I am confident we will lower speeds. We already know that the traffic volumes currently using Rittenhouse Road, and many use it as a shortcut, do not even come close to the numbers that by provincial standards would normally trigger dedicated bike lanes. The number, I have been told by Director Graham, are only approximately twenty-five percent of that threshold. Nine hundred cars per day versus threshold of four thousand cars per day. I'm a proponent that it's not always just about the numbers. Safety of our residents needs to always be the lens we look at these projects. Based on lower traffic speeds and lower traffic volumes, I support option one in the report. At the Active Transportation Walks that we participated in with 20 Valley principal, VP, school board officials, the region of Niagara, the AT staff, and Town of Lincoln Public Works staff, we heard in 2018 that residents had many concerns. They wanted this work completed ASAP. Everyone wanted sidewalks, and we heard loud and clear, on-street parking was a major issue. The loss of nineteen on-street parking and the loss of resident driveway parking that option two, dedicated bike lanes, by accommodating a 1.8-meter bike lane, is very problematic. It would be a major negative impact to these residents, as well as a loss of thirty-three boulevard trees. As a council, we made a decision that based on safety concerns from residents, as well as officials from 20 Valley School, that it was important to move this project up in our ten-year capital plan. We listened, and we heard residents' concerns at the PIC. I would not be a proponent of delaying this project to 2021, due to relocation of utilities to accommodate dedicated bike lanes. It's never all about the money, but to add $425,000 to this project, I cannot support it. Finally, I want to highlight that as the former Chair of Active Transportation Committee, we waited patiently for the completion of the Transportation Master Plan. We are committed as a council to look at complete street designs, that we look closely at all of our projects moving forward, to ensure we look at the safety of all of our residents, using all modes of active transportation, and that by definition describes all human-powered forms of travel, such as walking, cycling, skateboards, inline skating, skiing, canoeing, to name a few, as well promoting public transit as we move forward to implement many of the recommendations from the Transportation Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan. I know there will be many projects, such as the Green Lane Reconstruction from Roundabout at the New High School, through to Victoria Ave, where dedicated bike lanes will be absolutely necessary, and I look forward to demonstrating our commitment to dedicated bike lanes on these projects. I would like to thank Director Graham for his work on this report, and also for meeting with Active Transportation Committee members last week. In my opinion, it would be critical that AT has a voice at the table to ensure that we are always looking at development through an AT lens. Thank you, Tony Bernay. Thank you, Chair Rajima.
Thank you, Counselor Timmers. Are there any other comments from committee members? Counselor Reimer?
Thank you, Chair Rajima.
I should say questions, actually.
There might not be a question here, maybe just a comment. Over the past year and a half, Counselor Timmers and myself have spent quite a bit of time in this area, in the Rittenhouse Road area. We had two housing developments that came before council last year, off Azalea, one off Victoria, even going back to the election 2018. And speaking with residents there, these two items that are described in the report came to the top over everything, even more than sometimes the housing developments we're trying to engage them in conversation. These two were paramount to not only Rittenhouse residents, but the Azalea subdivision, the Cherry, Cherry Hill subdivision to the north. So overwhelmingly, these two items were ones that were of great concern, and I think these themes are covered in this, in this report. We achieved them through this report, through the traffic calming and the sidewalks. I think this project really ties that part of Vineland together. It's a little disjointed, having newer pieces on both sides of it, and I think this, especially the sidewalk, ties everything together. Regarding the bike lane option, I'd like to thank the Active Transportation Committee for their comments. I feel that the two documents that we have to guide us, the Transportation Master Plan and the Active Transportation Strategy, identify Rittenhouse as a share the road, I think, as mentioned in here, share the road type of scenario, and I would agree with that. Every evening, there's approximately ten to twelve cars already on the road on Rittenhouse, on-road parking. So we take those, plus the ones that are going to be lost due to the sidewalk on the north side of Rittenhouse, and to tell those people now that they're not going to have any parking, I don't think is a positive outcome of this project. I think in newer situations where there's a new road being established, and possibly newer subdivisions or developments, I think it's a little more reasonable to ask, or to suggest that biking lanes be part of a project, and this one, I just can't support that at all. So I definitely want to thank the staff for the work on the initial motion, and also, or on the initial report, sorry, and also on this follow-up work on the bike lanes, and I definitely support option number one in our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reimer. So I don't see any other. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My question is, is in regard to the process, and since it's been mentioned a couple of times, and there's no question about it, we have expressed overarching acceptance of the Transportation Master Plan. However, the approach to implementation does need to be addressed, I think, in more detail, maybe a better understanding overall, because in any existing neighborhood, we will have challenges, and we can't take a purist view of it, unless we're going to really disrupt the equilibrium in communities. So I certainly support the option one, and there's no question that we moved up this project a year after multiple delays. I think there were several, several years where this had been bumped. So it'll be very, very good to move forward, no question about it. However, in order to maintain- However, in order to maintain a high level of confidence with our partners who sit on that committee, I would like to ask the CAO if he has given any thought at all to how we might proceed in the future to make sure that in the majority of cases that we can carry out compliance around implementation. And, I mean, we may find ourselves in this situation more often than not in the future.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the mayor. I mean, I think I'll answer the question by highlighting some of the things that have already begun, and I think this project is a good example of that enhanced communication and collaboration that is already occurring, but I think as we look at projects that will continue to occur with the Active Transportation Committee. I know the committees come together. It was around last term, towards the end of last term in and of itself. It's had its own maturation, its own, you know, I'm going to suggest, growing pains, which happens with all committees, and so I think the willingness of our staff, both from Community Services and Public Works, to continue to engage with that committee, I think is a strong approach. It's a strong way forward. And I think just the education around what all of our committees do, the various elements of active transportation. I know for me intuitively, I hear active transportation, I often think cycling, but active transportation is a lot more than just cycling. It's about safe sidewalks. It's about connectivity across and within our community. It is about walking and a whole, you know, trails. There's a number of things that go into it, and so I think that continued public education, that continued education within the committee, and of course, the committee's passion for active transportation altogether, I think will allow us to move forward and get better. I see Director Graham nodding. I know we're talking about which roads projects, if not all roads projects, in some fashion that have an element of active transportation should find their way to the Active Transportation Committee in some fashion. So, I mean, I think those would be the comments at this particular point in time, and I'll definitely look to staff, both Ms. Zane and Mr. Graham, and Ms. Dale were appropriate as well, to make sure that the appropriate policies and frameworks and documents are shared with Active Transportation and vice versa.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And, Madam Chair, in 2019, when we moved the project up and the design work took place, started to take place, you know, as that work is completed now, and I've seen the final results, we absolutely did meet our goal, which was to create a safe road for children and also for seniors. And if you recall, there is no connection, there's no connectivity internally between Heritage Village, Cherry Heights, Cherry Hill, and Rittenhouse Road. And so, this really is a very isolated area, and I think we've achieved the goals that we set out. May not be 100% perfect according to this plan, but it meets the goals that we set when we moved this project up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While you were speaking, a few more people piped in, so Councilor Pachariva, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was unable to attend the Active Transportation Committee meeting on Thursday night, but have been speaking with them and received their information, and I mean, they brought about a compromise. You know what? You establish a citizen advisory committee, and I think it's important sometimes to take what they have into account. You know, if you summarily dismiss all of their recommendations, then they don't really stand any chance of doing anything. You've got a committee that's come together, is very passionate, has looked at it, has looked at it holistically, has looked at it in a futuristic term, you know, proposing a compromise that, you know, remove the on-street parking, then the construction can proceed next year, or this year. Leave the bike lanes in, remove the on-street parking. Councilor Reimer had noted, you know, there's 14 cars parked along the street. Going to library board meeting the one night, I noticed six, and I think they were more parked on the road out of convenience rather than a lack of space. The majority of them were, with respect to the group home, where the hedge is there and it causes an issue anyway. In order to be futuristic, you need to sometimes think outside of the box, and I think that's what the Active Transportation Committee is trying to do here. They're trying to think 30 years down the road. They're visioning a connection across Jordan Harbor at some point with the old rail trellis, and bike lanes on Rittenhouse Road would provide that connection east-west. So, I agree with their comments. I think it's a great solution, so as opposed to item one, option one, option two, this provides option number three. And you just provide credence to their work, and, you know, with respect to on-street parking, you know, our street was, had parking on both sides of the street, and then we came into the one side dedicated parking. You know what? People make adjustments, and I think, too, we can't be lost on, you know, on-street parking with respect to winter maintenance. Now, this should, we haven't had a whole heck of a lot of it, but when it has happened, you know, a simple walk around town, and you can notice the people that still don't obey, that keep it clear, you know, stay off the road when it's going to snow. So, if we're in the business of actively moving people about town, creating different routes, creating different traffic patterns, creating different mindsets, you need to be open to things, and you need to be open to sometimes compromise, and I think the Active Transportation Committee provided a great compromise, and I would vote in favor of said compromise, which is option number three. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pachariva. Councilor Russell is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very similar to the commentary from Councilor Pachariva. Again, I like to see a little bit more due diligence with respect to the commentary from the Active Transportation Committee. I, along with Councilor Pachariva, weren't available to make the last meeting, but I'd like to thank Mr. Tom Clark for providing a very fulsome engagement of what some of the commentary was and some of his concerns. And, again, when I think about even some of the mayor's comments, I believe it was last week, about compromise, and, again, how we need to try to find some of that middle ground so that not necessarily any party comes away as a winner, but everybody comes away feeling that the correct decision was made, or something along those lines. When I heard Councilor Renee's commentary, and when I heard Councilor Reimer's commentary, again, I think a lot of those are very valid points, and I think when you start looking at futuristic impacts, and Councilor Pachariva did kind of note on it about where do we want to go, and there are some aspects of the report that I'm very concerned about, about the losing of 33 boulevard trees is a concern, but at the same time, I think about potentially how many cars potentially could come off the road, not physically off the road from parking, but physically off the road from people using other modes of transportation. Yes, there is some different modalities we can use, and I know Active Transportation Committee member Carol Phillips would be very happy to see that we are addressing some of the walking and some of the potential running, but there are aspects down the road where we could be using bikes and cycling as opposed to cars, and those will have impacts on climate change and whatnot. So, I do like, I would like to see some maybe further thought into a more compromising setting between the two options. Again, Councilor Pachariva referencing an option three. I just think that maybe a little bit more time and more thought could go into this to see if there's some kind of compromise between the two where we could find a happy medium to kind of go forward. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilor Russell. I have Councilor Timmers next, and following that, Councilor McIllic.
Thank you, Chair Rajima. There has been an incredible amount of time spent on this and with meetings, and I thanked Director Graham for all of his work and time and effort that he put into looking at these two options very closely and in great detail, and we do appreciate the Active Transportation's comments and input. I clearly support option one. This roadway has, it's not an easy roadway to work with. Some of the areas are very narrow. Pushing it out, making it wider, is not going to achieve what we're looking for. We're looking for, to slow the traffic down, pedestrian safety, sidewalks, and we certainly don't want to slow this down any further. We want to get working on this project. It's been promised, the people are waiting for it, to take a step back and start reconfiguring what we're going to do, and we start looking at removing on-street parking, removing 30 trees, removing people's length of their driveways. I just cannot support that. This road just does not accommodate what we're looking, what the Active Transportation is looking to do there. There's just not simply the room. The road is not wide enough, and we've done the PIC, we've consulted the public, and we've heard what they want, and I would like to just see us move forward. So, I support option one completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Timmers. Councilor McIllic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I fully respect the effort and the work that the Active Transportation Committee is doing and their thoughts on the whole development and planned road reconfiguration, but I also have to take a look at our town in general, and we have some roads that are former apple car trails, like they're not typical roads. We can't build what we would like to build on every road. That particular street, I drove down it on my way here, and I think the part close to Victoria Avenue, I'm not sure if we were to add another 10 feet to that planned current development or current reconfiguration, I'm not sure if residents living on that street's driveways would be long enough to park their own cars in their driveway, much less not be able to park on the street itself. That would be unfortunate to have to deal with that situation that's on that part of the road. The other thing is that, you know, it's, I'm all about bike lanes. I love bike lanes on those seriously dangerous roads like highways, Main Thoroughfares, King Street being one of them through the Jordan Valley. You know, I would love to see bike lanes there, however, logistically and physically, the region has told us it'd be not financially feasible at this time to do such a thing, and that breaks my heart. But with this particular street that we're looking at, I think that with some proper traffic mitigation, calming mitigation processes, we can come up with a satisfactory solution that would benefit both the residents on the street as well as people riding their bikes, and so. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like we're having quite a discussion. Back to you, Councilor Pachariva, and then over to Councilor Reimer, and then I think hopefully we'll be ready. I think everybody's had an option to speak twice with a couple of exceptions. So, Councilor Pachariva, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't think in any way, shape, or form is the Active Transportation Committee, myself or Councilor Russell, I don't mean to speak for him, are we asking for a deferral, but just to come back within the three-week new meeting cycle with that and then proceed. And again, Councilor McIllic had mentioned the crossing of the Jordan Hollow. Well, again, if you're thinking in a futuristic view, bike lanes on Rittenhouse Road would lead to a connection across Victoria with the futuristic crossing on the old train trellis at Jordan Harbor. And then where you take in the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority's plan of the crossconnection from Balls Falls down to Jordan Harbor using a boardwalk, now you've got your north-south connection. So, these are futuristic documents, and then a connection to Prudential. So, that was the whole Active Transportation Committee's comments, and Mr. Clark specifically, that if you look futuristic, if you look at pulling in other authorities' plans and working collaboratively, you can solve a lot of issues. And again, this is if, you know, the felt, the feeling from committee, and, you know, we weren't at that meeting that night, but Councilor Russell and I have sat on there for a year with them, is that it'll just be seen as another missed opportunity, right? To go back and to look at it a few years later like Culp Road. So, Culp Road is another one of those connections where it's a missed opportunity. We established on-street parking there, there's one car that parks there. So, again, you need to think futuristic, and I think that's what the committee's trying to do. So, in no way, shape, or form are we saying, you know, put it off for another year. If you take their compromise, there's no relocation of the gas main that was told to them that night, so, you know, you bring that design back. 33 trees are, you know, are slated for removal. How many of those are dead? Can you not replant them? So, just, you know, it's a three-week reprieve, I would say. Come back, and then we're ready to vote on that. So, not deferring it, not going away. I don't think it's, the project's been tendered yet, so it's not, everything can still proceed as planned with a sober second thought.
Okay, Councilor Pachariva, I have Councilor Reimer next, and then I'm wondering if that's something that you're suggesting, if you're going to suggest amending the motion, but we'll get back to that. Councilor Reimer? Sorry, let me... Okay, there you go.
Thank you, Chair Rajima. Just a couple of comments. As far as the delay goes, my two cents on that, I think this has been delayed long enough. The, we're going to be looking at a tender document later on here that has some really good pricing. The longer it goes on in the year, the chance of tenders going, being higher increase quite a bit. And the term missed opportunities, while I agree with that in principle, in this case it relates to not listening to the residents of Rittenhouse Road. That's what the, that's kind of what the compromise is. So, if we would have taken all the discussions we've had, we had one gentleman from Cherry Heights who expressed a concern about the road condition, and he rides a bike every day. I saw him actually today on the road, and his was not for bike lanes, his was simply for the surface to be better than it is now, which is kind of like Mr., or Council McIllic referred to as a goat trail. So, I understand the comments and the passion, I guess I'll use that word, to have a bike lane there. I think the, and I don't view this as a missed opportunity. I would have trouble having Rittenhouse connect anywhere because it deadends at Victoria. And so, my view on that, plus the residents' desire to see the plan that was implemented, or, sorry, the plan that was presented by staff, I think that factor outweighs the bike lane, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reimer. So, I have nobody else in the queue, so I'm going to go ahead and read the motion. I haven't received anything amended. The motion is to receive and file Public Works Report PW-0520 regarding Rittenhouse Road Reconstruction Project Bike Lane Assessment. Approve option one, that the share the road approach, bracket no separate bike lanes, bracket, be implemented as part of the Rittenhouse Road Reconstruction Project as outlined in this report. We require a motion for the mover. A mover for the motion. Councilor Timmers. All in favor? Okay, so that motion is carried, not unanimously, but it is carried. Thank you. All opposed? There we go. So, that will go in the minutes. Is that correct? Thank you. So, moving on, the next report, or next item on the agenda is 8.7. It's a report regarding, it's PW-0620, Friesen Neighborhood Water Main Replacement Phase One. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Pachariva?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question, and it came up at budget, wondering when we might start looking at taking on the role of full-time inspection, you know, the possibility of hiring someone with the engineering background to look at this. You know, we've got the cost of this full-time inspection at $95,000. That's probably almost the cost of an F- That's probably almost the cost of an FTE, and knowing that we have multiples of these coming up throughout the year, to me, uh, it would make sense to really take a, a hard look at, um, establishing a position like this within the town, uh, knowing that we have, you know, uh, what, half a dozen of these, uh, throughout the year. So, um, just, uh, thoughts on that through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Kocopoulos, maybe Mr. Graham, maybe Ms. Trawala, wondering, uh, their thoughts.
Through you, uh, through you, Madam Chair. Uh, I know Director Graham wants to make some comments, but, uh, I couldn't agree more with the council. If we look at something temporary, I think we need to look at the duration and maybe look out, uh, through our 10-year capital plan and determine what are some of those projects that are coming forward, and then, uh, bring a business, uh, case to council on this, because I think absolutely, council, when you look at the value of some of these, um, it absolutely makes sense. But I know Director Graham's nodding and may have some additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kocopoulos. Director Graham?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the, to the counselor. Um, yeah, for sure. I mean, that's a really good point to make, and I think it's something that we'll monitor. Uh, just to give you a little more information on this, so this would be a full-time person who's on the job site, uh, you know, eight, 10 hours a day, so they're actually dedicated to that job site. And that cost also pays for, um, contract management as well, so it's not just a, an inspector on-site. So when we do the design work with an engineering firm, we're also, that cost also includes, you know, contract and project management related to the engineering firm as well that the inspector would be working for. So just to kind of give you, um, you know, a little more information in terms of what the cost represents in total. Um, but yeah, definitely something moving forward that will, you know, we can monitor.
Thank you, Director Graham. Um, did you turn your mic off by mistake? Is that what happened? Okay. I see that, so I'll let you in for your second clarification question.
Well, follow-up to that question. You are lovely, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, so having said that, then, and, and, you know, if that person is there full-time, eight hours a day, then, then I think as we write our RFPs, then we must entrust this person with the communication of the project. They're there on-site, they should be the one putting the door hangers on, knocking on the doors, your water's going to be off, we're gonna pour a curb, it's a long weekend, you take your trailer out of your lot, rather than that information have to come back to, to town and then us do it and then get it back out. Like it's, you know, talking to Councilor Brene, and, and, you know, his wife was involved in this for, uh, a number of years, and with various projects in the city of Hamilton, this was under their purveillance. This was part of the RFP, is that the contractor and, and the full-time, uh, admin, um, person, that's their responsibility. So if, if that's the case, hoping that maybe we can drill down a little bit more and make sure that, that some of this is delivered. Looking back on the missteps of the Elizabeth Street project, we had that person there, there was time lag on the information coming back, and then getting back out. If they're there and they're accustomed to doing this, then they should be doing it. So.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Pachariva. CAO has a comment.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. I mean, definitely, I think what the counselor's highlighting is really that project management model. Uh, and I will take council's comments, uh, and I see a lot of heads nodding, at least to go back and, um, and, and start putting, uh, some thought to, uh, what a business case would look like potentially to come back to council at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. CAO.
I just want to say how happy I am to see this project in there, because it's a chronic, chronic, chronic site of water main breaks. So, so happy.
Yeah, I think we just had one recently.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Councilor McIllicce?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to, uh, perhaps, uh, the CAO or Director De, uh, by having a contracted third-party observer or inspector, does that help us? And if, if, should there be a problem with a job site, or should there be a problem? Like, is it, by having a nonpartisan view of the, uh, project, is that beneficial in any way? Or supposing, hypothetically speaking, if a job isn't going well, and we are, uh, stating that with an employee, that we're not satisfied with the work, could that be a possible litigation issue?
Thank you, counselor. Uh, I don't know. Um, is there somebody that wants to respond to that? I can't see that. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. Good question. I think a third party is very beneficial at times. And again, it's, maybe think about it, too, it's not just this person on-site, so we have access to the entire engineering company that have designed this project as well. So, you know, you have a lot of specialized resources with that type of, um, arrangement, if you will. So.
And the other thing I might add is, traditionally, these projects occur most of the time in the summertime, and if we have three, four projects fluidly moving at the same time, it may be too much for one individual to ask at one particular time. That, that would be a concern I have with regards to hiring a full-time, uh, inspector.
Okay, um, council, or, or CAO had, wants to comment to that further. Thank you, Councilor McIllicce.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to the counselor. I mean, I, I, I think, uh, on both sides of this issue, I think some good points have been raised. I think the one caution I'd make, uh, in, in talking about peer reviewers or third-party reviewers, I think inherently, uh, some will look at the municipality and say if, if that, if that work is being done, uh, by an individual within the municipality, there's a bias. Others believe that peer reviewers have their own inherent bias for the reviewer, for example. So I think, you know, uh, there are codes of ethics, there are standards, uh, that all staff, whether they're internal, uh, whether they're external, need to abide by. Uh, and I would say one necessarily isn't better than the other. The issue around work planning that you highlight, Counselor, I think is a very good one, and I think at some point in times, we need to be fluid, we need to be able to react in such a way. Uh, and so I would, I would suggest from that perspective, uh, we need to look at what are the benefits of doing so. There's probably enough work, uh, for us to ensure that where possible, we have external parties reviewing it, but also internally, uh, we have, uh, a particular resource. And I think in any of these cases, uh, where we would come forward on something like this that involves capital projects, it would be more of a long-term, temporary-type role versus, um, you know, versus something that continues to occur in perpetuity. So all things that we can definitely look back, uh, look at, uh, when we come back with something like this, and something that I think, you know, staff will go away and look at.
Uh, it's just, if I may, the reason why I ask is I, I've seen projects within the region that have not gone well, and have gone to litigation where, um, I think the case is perhaps stronger if, if you have a nonpartisan view, um, rather than just decide for ourselves that, hey, this isn't going well, um, we're not paying. So that's, that's, that's the, that's the fear I would have by not having that independent lens. Thank you.
I think you make a good point, Counselor McIllicce, and looking forward to having that conversation in the future. Thank you. Counselor Reimer?
Sorry, just to pick up on the comments, I know we're getting a little bit off-topic, but just to, uh, to reply to Counselor Pachariva, when he brought that, that topic up, and I, and I, I agree with him that we need to look at that. Because the cost gets up there, unfortunately, what Counselor McIllicce referred to is everything comes at once. And so having been associated with third-party inspection and, and municipal inspection, with this type of setup, there's eight to 10 hours of supervision. If we have four projects going on, we have our own inspector, there might only be two hours of inspection. But also, having said that, jobs run smoother in general when the municipality has their own inspector. So maybe we need to reach a point where we have a little more than one, one person type of thing. But it's certainly something to keep in mind, because those, those, uh, numbers do add up.
Thank you, Counselor Reimer. So I have nobody else in the queue, Madam Mayor? You've not tapped me on the shoulder? I feel like I've read this motion already, but I don't think I have. So I have a motion to receive and file the report PW 0620 for the Friesen Neighborhood Water Main Replacement Phase One. Approve the contract award for the 2020 Friesen Neighborhood Water Main Replacement Phase One tender to Peters Excavating for the amount of $1,231,003. And approve the firm of Coal Engineering Group Limited to provide engineering services at a cost of $94,332. And approve the mayor and town clerk to sign and seal the contract documents on behalf of the municipality. Do I have a mover for that motion, Counselor Russell? All in favor? Okay, that is carried, and it's unanimous. Okay, I think we're getting toward the end of the agenda. Item 8.8 of the agenda is confidential items. We are now considering confidential items. I will require a mover to proceed into closed session for the purposes of, under Section 239 of the Municipal Act, notices hereby given that committee adjourned in closed session in order to address litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local boards as it pertains to confidential report PW 0320, Quarry Road update. Who is moving that motion? Counselor Timmers. All in favor? Okay, that motion is carried, so we'll be going into closed session now, so we'll be staying here, so I'll have to ask. Okay, that motion is carried, so we'll be going into closed session now, so we'll be staying here, so I'll have to ask.
Okay, I have a motion. I require a mover for the following motion. That committee resume an open session and receive the update provided by CAO and staff regarding confidential report PW 0320 Corey Road update. Can I have a mover? Counselor Reimer. All in favor? That motion is carried unanimously. We have now concluded the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda and will now resume with the rest of the committee of the whole agenda. The next item on the agenda is committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks? Counselor Pachariva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to follow up, but I know Counselor McPherson isn't here tonight, but you know, all around that the motion of the plastics ban and the notice of motion and it coming like right to that meeting, you know, kind of sight unseen. And, you know, I stopped on my travels today and I picked up this bottle of Dasani water and it said plant bottle. So I scratched my head and I go, plant bottle, what's that? I'm going to get home and I'm going to Google it. So Coca-Cola has introduced the plant bottle, a fully recyclable plastic bottle made partially from plant material. The plant bottle, which is being piloted with the Dasani Water brand, puts Coca-Cola on a course to eventually introduce bottles made from 100% recyclable and renewable materials, said Mutar Kent, chairman and CEO of the beverage company. The new bottle is made from a blend of petroleum-based materials and as much as 30% plant-based materials. The plant bottle is made from a process that turns sugarcane and molasses, and a byproduct of sugar production, into a component for PET plastic, according to the press release. Future generations of the plant bottle may use other plant materials. Using 30% plant material for the bottle reduces the carbon emissions by 25%, according to a life cycle analysis conducted by the Imperial College of London. The plant bottle can be processed through existing manufacturing and recycling facilities without contaminating traditional PET, Coke said. In addition to Dasani, Coca-Cola will use the bottle for sparkling brands in selected markets later this year, and it will add vitamin water. The sustainable aspects of the bottle will be promoted through on-packaged messaging and in-store point-of-sale displays, as well on the web. Less than a month ago, Coca-Cola made headlines with its push to green the nation's capital through use of hybrid delivery vehicles, a recycling program, and more. So I think when we come out of left field with these notices of motion, I mean, they need to be fully flushed out and hopefully the staff report will do that, you know, and though it's noble to, to, you know, have a plastics ban like straws, straws are a number one thing, but, but bottles, maybe it's a combination of looking at those and increasing recycling and making sure that we have recycling utensils or boxes or bins or baskets or you name it at all of our facilities, they are diverted properly to the recycling stream. And, and then we do, and then we do our part that way. So, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a fulsome look at this because, you know what, just in discussion, you know, around my circle of friends and at the arena and, you know, I don't think in any way, shape, or form, and I did bring it up that evening, that we're going to be running around on a 90-degree or 35-degree Celsius day taking Gatorade and water away from kids at a summer camp because we've done this, so. Just, you know, would, 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 you know, respectfully say, let's, let's pump the brakes, let's have a fulsome look at this because, you know, like I said that evening, the manufacturers of these are making strides in being environmentally friendly.
Thank you, Pachariva. I'm actually, I'm glad to hear that, that there are steps being taken. That's good news, right? That's good news. There's, there's moves being made and it's happening at source. Right, so that's, so that's good news. Did you want to comment? I thought you... No, no, that's fine, thank you.
All good information, so...
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I have Counselor Russell.
Sorry, that was a, it was a grace of will-o'-quay. Counselor Pachariva, I appreciate the gusto with it. I think the intent of Counselor McPherson's motion was not to, again, it was not about the recyclable nature of bottles, it was more about the bottles that are not recycled. Again, I think Counselor Rinchema had mentioned that, again, even though they are diverted into the traditional recycling process, we, there's no confirmation 100% of where they go from there. And just as, again, a moot historical point, I just question, so as a child growing up, what water bottle did you use to have the water on the 35-degree day?
Malls.
Right, and everybody survived. And again, it's, it's just one of those things where, again, a product like Dasani, which is tap water, just as an FYI, is, again, it's something that is still historically very new, and there are other options for, for consumers to have water outside of the current single-use plastic, so I still maintain that Counselor McPherson's motion should include them.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Russell. What was I going to say? Oh, I read something just recently in the news that, I think it was Hamilton, was saying that a lot of what goes into their bins is going straight to the garbage because people aren't respecting it and they're putting dog, dog poo in there, so it's not good. You're back in the queue.
I am, because we're going to go to 11.
No.
I think so, at least I do.
I'm going to go, well, I can't go to Counselor unless you go out. Okay, all right. Counselor Reimer.
Sorry, I had to just add a few, a few comments to, I wasn't going to comment, but just to follow up on Counselor Pachariva, I am your representative on the Grimsby Road 12 Dump Committee. So a lot of the reasons why the companies are starting to have this recyclable bent to them is, and I believe it's Bill 151, is going to be coming in to effect where the product manufacturer is going to be responsible for the recycling of it. And so people want to get away from, from that aspect, so they're coming up with products now that are pseudo-recyclable, which we all think are compost bags are recyclable, and they're not really all recyclable. So I'll make that comment. That's why a lot of stuff is coming down the line, and I'm not sure when that take effects either, I can find that out. The other comment, sorry, you made, I'm having a brain cramp, I apologize. No, not tap water.
Straws.
I'm losing it.
That's okay, we can come back to you if...
Sure, come back, yes.
We'll come back to you as soon as you turn your mic on. There it is. Off, I mean. I don't have anybody else in the queue, so that's that. Any other committee remarks or announcements? Okay, so there being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.